Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning request, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
I'll start by reading the consent agenda items. Item number one is approval of the March 5, 2008 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two is Platts. Item three is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota correcting clerical errors in certain rezoning ordinances. Item four is a future land use amendment allowing changes in future land use from allocation of commercial, multifamily, and single-family residential to a reallocation of commercial, multifamily, and single-family residential future land uses and adding parks and open spaces and office institutional future land uses at East Madison Street and North Potterhouse Road. Item five is rezone AG Agriculture District to Canterbury Heights East Plan Development District, RD and RS2 Residential, and the RC Recreation Conservation District for future development at East Madison Street and North Potterhouse Road. Item six, rezone from the Grand Prairie East Plan Development District, RS2 Residential, RD Residential, and AG Agriculture District to the RS2 Residential, RC Recreation Conservation, and the Grand Prairie East Plan Development District for future development at 26951 South Cliff Avenue. Item seven, rezone RS2 Residential District to the S Institutional District to develop parking for Sioux Falls Seminary at 2015 and 2019 South Norton Avenue. Item eight is a rezone C4 Plan Commercial District to the RC Recreation Conservation District for Parks and Recreation Services at 3200 West 12th Street, and item eight has been deferred. Item nine is a rezone I-1 Light Industrial District to the RS2 Residential District to reflect current land uses at 501 South Dodge Avenue. Item 10 is a major amendment to subareas C and F Willow Run Plan Development District to adjust subarea boundaries for future residential development at 8,000 East Highway 42 Arrowhead Parkway. Item 11, conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to allow retail services at 1208 West 51st Street. Item 12 is a conditional use permit in C3 Central Business District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment accessory use to a restaurant at 300 North Sharapa Place. Item 13 is a conditional use permit in the C4 Plan Commercial District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment in a hotel at 4304 West Empire Place. Item 14 is a conditional use permit in C4 Plan Commercial District to allow on-sale alcohol establishment in a hotel at 4300 West Empire Place. Item 15 is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment accessory use to a restaurant at Lake Center 2 West 12th Street. Item 16 is a conditional use permit in the C3 Central Business District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at 500 North Main Avenue. Item 17 is a final development plan in subareas C, Westwood Valley Plan Development District to construct three fourplex residential buildings at Norma Trail west of West 32nd Street. Item 18 is a final development plan in subarea A, Platinum Valley Plan Development District to construct a Lewis Drugstore and Sanford Clinic at West 69th Street and South Louise Avenue. Item 19 is a final development plan in subarea E, Brady Estates Plan Development District to construct a telecommunications antenna support structure at 3600 South Southeastern Avenue. Item 20 is a preliminary subdivision plan for Canterbury East Edition for residential and non-residential lots at Northwest Corner of South Dakota 100 and East Madison Street. Item 21 is preliminary subdivision plan for the Grand Prairie Estates Edition at 1/4 mile west of Cliff Avenue on 85th Street. Item 22, preliminary subdivision plan for Grand Arbor Commercial Edition to develop commercial and residential uses at West 85th Street and South Western Avenue. Item 22 has been deferred. And item 23 is a preliminary subdivision plan for Willow Ridge Edition, a residential and office subdivision at East 10th Street and Six Mile Road, and item 23 has been deferred as well. Is there anyone from the audience who wants to move one of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda? How about the commission? Anyone wish to move any of the items to the regular agenda? All right, if not, the items that have been deferred from the consent agenda are items eight, 22, and 23. Is there a motion to approve the revised consent agenda?
I move to approve. I second.
There's a motion, the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Revised consent agenda has been approved. On the regular agenda, there's two items that have been deferred. There are item number 28, which is rezone AG Agriculture District to the O Office, RD Residential, RS2 Residential, RC Recreation Conservation District for future development of allowed uses. That's number 28. And then, item 37 is a final development plan in subareas C Whispering Ridge Plan Development District to construct multifamily housing at Southeastern Avenue and East Whispering Trail. That item has been deferred as well. So with that in mind, it's a motion to approve the revised regular agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The regular agenda, revised regular agenda is approved. So our first item tonight on the regular agenda is item 24. It's a rezone C2 General Commercial and RA1 Residential District to the Chesterman Plan Development District to reflect current land uses at South Minnesota Avenue, South Spring Avenue, and South Duluth Avenue between West 31st Street and West 33rd Street. Staff report, please.
Sorry, I was still writing on the consent board. Jeffrey Schmidt, representing planning staff for this item this evening. This is a rezoning request for an existing property on the south-central part of town. It's a rezoning from C2 to a planned development district. This existing land use is in place. It's basically the Coke Distribution Center and their incidental land uses on the west side of Spring. What they'd like to do is continue to keep those land uses active in the city of Sioux Falls but not zone them to the conventional zoning district. At that point, they'd be zoning it to industrial zoning, and we thought it'd be more appropriate to do it as a planned development district, really kind of to protect the core neighborhoods so that you could continue to regulate what types of land uses that would be appropriate at Minnesota and 33rd Street. So the planned development district allows for the existing land uses to remain in this area between 31st and 33rd Street from Minnesota over to Duluth. And it's approximately three acres in a planned development district. It meets the intent of a planned development district and the future land use plan, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. Is the applicant here, please?
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Matt Bach with the Woods Fuller Law Firm in Sioux Falls, 300 South Phillips in Sioux Falls, and with me is Mr. Mark Martin, who is the general manager of the Coke operation in Sioux Falls here.
Anything to add?
No, sir.
All right, any questions for either one of these gentlemen? Okay, guess not. Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience who would care to speak on this item? All right, if not, is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I would be happy to make the motion tonight to approve this rezone.
I'll second.
There's a motion, the second. Any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Item 24 is approved. Item 25 is a future land use amendment allowing changes in future land uses from allocation of single-family, multifamily residential to an allocation of commercial, office institutional, multifamily, and single-family future land uses at Northeast corner of Six Mile Road and East 10th Street. Staff report.
Good evening. My name is Steve Randall with the Planning Department. I'll be representing staff on this and other reports this evening. This application was deferred by the Planning Commission on February to allow the applicant time to respond to staff comments and to address comments made by neighboring property owners concerning drainage and access. And the report that is in front of you this evening is basically the same except for a few items. I'll point those out. The land uses have changed now. What we're really doing is allocating parks and recreation open space for drainage and also 22.4 acres of office institutional instead of commercial. So we have a transition of land uses from the corner that we didn't have with the original application. The original application had commercial in there, didn't address that drainage situation at the corner, but now it is being addressed with land use that would be opened with drainage improvements and then a transition of office uses back into single-family residential-type zoning. The zoning and subdivision plans are also on tonight's agenda, and we'll be discussing those at this time. Staff is recommending approval because it does address the concerns of staff comments and the neighbors. At the last meeting, it was heard, and we have taken no comments from neighbors to this point. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. Steve Van Buschirk, 5101 South Nevada Avenue. Just here, I can answer any questions. I guess the one thing maybe I could add to this, we didn't get our signs posted, so we're not going to do the rest of the subdivision plan tonight, but we thought we'd go ahead with this. We'll be back next month. But if you saw that down by the RC, we've also got some detention area because one of the concerns last time, and I think it's probably in item 28 is probably where it's at, so it's down the slideshow always, but there's a detention area down there that's probably going to be another couple acres or so that that's where we're going to take care of our water to control to pre-development flow rates, I guess. So that kind of took care of that one issue. And on that slide there, you can see that road alignment. We worked with the Andersons across the road, worked with parks and school, Brandon School District up there. We got that road curving up to the north there, so the connection point of on Six Mile Road is, I don't know, I'm going to guess it's like 250 feet north or something like that of where it was the last go-around, but that lines up with the sewer that was stubbed into the Andersons' property, so we got that all kind of hashed out too from the last time. So I think we got it organized. We had a neighborhood meeting Monday night, coupled into Andersons. We're happy to see the office across the way, and I know there's a couple neighbors here tonight too. I don't know if they'll speak, but that's all I've got unless we get some more questions for me.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Anyone care to speak on this item? Don't see any, so is there commission action on item 25?
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval on item number 25.
I'll second the motion.
This motion is second. Is there any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Item 25 is recommended for approval. Item 26 is a rezone from AG Agriculture District to the Grand Prairie Estates Plan Development District to allow single-family residential development at 1/4 mile west of South Cliff Avenue on 85th Street. Staff report.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission, members of the audience. My name is Russ Saurensen, representing this particular item as well as others this evening. This is a rezoning. The applicants are Eric Willitson and Dan Lemming, and they're proposing to rezone approximately 40 acres to allow the development of 12 executive-style single-family residential lots around a pond. You've got residential land uses to the north and to the south and east. You have agricultural land uses. You have undeveloped land in residential and office and C4 districts to the west. The future land use plan amendment was approved last month, which included the subject property, and the property is located south of the proposed South Dakota Highway 100, which is proposed to be a new transportation quarter around the city of Sioux Falls. The concept plan for initial development has been provided, and it has been determined to be complete. The 12 executive-style single-family lots totaled about 19.8 acres, and there's a pond that entitles 3.3 acres. An area that lies beyond the private road that would serve as the buffer entails about 12 and 1/2 acres. The depth of the pond would be 18 to 20 feet in depth, and the lots would measure approximately two acres in size. The proposed subarea regulations for this Grand Prairie Estates PD are found at the end of your report, and under other regulations, these are unique to our city, which there's an introductory element in that there would be allowing one guest house per unit per lot. Also, you will find that there would be some storage sheds that would also be allowed on this development, and that regarding the guest house on each lot, if the developer and the owners would like, that it would have a separate address. They would not have a separate address, and they would also allow for guest parking as well. The guest house would have to have the same style architecture and materials as the principal building, and final development plans will not be required for review and approval. Emergency responders have suggested that there be an emergency response access be provided to the pond and depicted on final subdivision plans. Because the application conforms to the intent of the 2015 growth plan and the intent to allow single-family residential development for this area, the applicant has provided an initial development plan. Staff is recommending approval of this rezoning with the subarea regulations as presented. Staff has received no calls or correspondence from the public regarding this. That concludes our report.
Any questions for us?
Mr. Chair, Russ, I'm looking at this, and maybe the applicant needs to respond to this, but in subareas C, one of the permitted uses is a pet cemetery.
That was the initial proposal, but that has been deleted. If you look in your staff report, that has been negotiated out of the subarea regulations, and I think the developer can confirm that as well.
Thanks, thank you, Russ.
Any other questions for us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant here, please.
Good evening. My name's Eric Willitson, Willitson Lawn Engineering, 902 South Cleveland, here tonight representing the owners of the property. I guess Russ pretty much gave a pretty good overview of the project. With that, I would not take up your time but answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Eric?
Eric, this sounds like an awfully nice development. When we're talking about guest houses now, we're not talking about rental property. We're talking about for...
Absolutely not, and I think your subarea regulations indicate that this is not rental property. These are guest houses for someone staying with the primary resident. They will not be rented out. There will not be a separate address, mail service, anything like that.
That's what I kind of assumed.
It's a higher-end development that will be also governed with covenants within the development to control the type of construction that goes up, and you'll see that it's very high-end.
Okay, thank you.
One other question. As Russ mentioned, there was a concern about emergency access to the pond. Is that something that you've considered?
We will, when we bring plans forward, provide an easement for a vehicle to be able to access that in an emergency.
Just from one point or several points?
I'm sorry.
From one point or from several points?
I think probably just one location around there that would access, you know, be able to get to the pond.
Any other questions?
I had one. Talk somewhere, and I can't put my finger on it now, but boat storage or a building that's...
We're making a provision to allow a property owner to build a small shed closer to the pond on their property for storing, say, a paddle boat or a canoe or some, you know, some type of item for use down at the pond that just allow that use there. We don't want it to turn into a storage shed for, you know, anything other than those type of uses.
Would there be size regulations in the materials?
There is size regulations, yes.
Eric, is it a non-motorized lake?
Yes, it would be. Yes, it would be. It's very small. Like I said, it's only like three acres or something. It's a private, obviously a private lake, but I don't believe you'd ever see any skiing or jet skis or anything like that there as well.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? Here, if there isn't, is there commission action on item 26?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
This motion is second. Any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Item 26 is recommended for approval. Item 27, rezone RS2 Residential District to the O Office District for future office and medical office development at South 7th Avenue and East 18th Street. Staff report.
The applicant for this project is Sioux Falls Surgical Physicians. It's a two-acre site approximately, and it's currently vacant. It's been cleared of houses and other improvements on the block. A portion of the block that would be the northeast corner is currently zoned O Office for office development. The remainder of the block was purchased and cleared for the purpose of rezoning for office development, and that's what the request is this evening. North of the block, then, it's vacant in the S Institutional District. That's that vacant ground with the row of trees up along the north there, and then it's single-family development, residential development to the south and to the west. To the east, there's a medical campus parking lot in the Avera PD Plan Development District and a vacant lot in the O Office District. This is located in the corner of the All Saints Neighborhood Conservation Area, and so some of that information is provided for the sake of discussion, possibly of preservation of the neighborhood. Staff looks at office uses as being an acceptable transition from higher, more institutional uses or commercial uses into a single-family residential neighborhood, and so staff is supporting the rezoning request this evening. The concept plan that's been provided by the applicant indicates building development on the four corners of the block with parking internal to the four structures, limiting access to the north and to the south. So it appears to be a reasonable and acceptable concept for development of the block as a transition into the single-family neighborhood and should be compatible with it, similar to other projects that we've seen around town in those cases. Staff is recommending approval. We've had a couple calls from neighbors across the street to the south who were curious about what was going on. They had had some discussions with their neighbors and also with the applicant, and perhaps the applicant can shed more light on that this evening and report to you those neighborhood comments. That concludes staff remarks.
Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair, Steve, this entire block is part of the Avera PD?
No.
It's not.
This entire block is outside of the planned development zoning district. Only a portion of the block, the northeast corner of the block, is zoned O Office. The rest of it's, right now, is zoned RS2, single-family residential.
But even that corner is not a part of the Avera PD? So this is unrelated. It's just an adjacent zone?
That's correct.
Does the planning department have any thoughts on how far we might expect or allow development to creep into that neighborhood to the west?
None that there's a consensus of opinion on. It's been discussed a little bit. Again, office uses being an acceptable transition from an institutional use such as the hospital campus into the single-family neighborhood, just how far those office uses would be allowed to go has not been determined. That really is a matter for public hearing and for decisions by the Planning Commission and the city council.
Thank you. Any other questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. David Van Nuenheisen, Fegan Construction, 1600 East 39th Street North, here on behalf of my client, Sioux Falls Surgical Center. Brad Darger is with us this evening. The current plan with this is to develop the southwest corner of the property most immediately with a small medical office building, and that medical office building is intended just to be a use where it is scheduled appointments only, and so the impact on this neighborhood should be very low. Currently, the northeast corner of the property is already zoned office, so we're trying to extend that to the remainder of the block. They also own that property along 18th Street to the north, which would be on the south side of Edgar Steel, and that is currently zoned S Institutional. So can I answer any questions?
You said southwest. Did you mean southeast corner?
I'm sorry, southeast corner, yep.
David, did you folks, did you have a neighborhood meeting?
I'm not aware that a neighborhood meeting was conducted, no.
Could I just get you to come up and just say your name and address, just so we have it on record, please?
Brad Darger, 428 East 20th, Sioux Falls.
Mr. Chair, gentlemen, I don't really have any issues with this one petition for this block, but my fear, obviously, and we see this a lot in these medical districts, is that all of a sudden... is that all of a sudden the next block of homes will disappear. And, and somebody will be back in here asking for another rezone, and before you know it, we're sadly lacking in some of these historic districts for the fabric required to, for them to remain a historic district. So that's, that was the reason for my question of staff, because I think at some point in time, we need to consider just how far we'd be comfortable letting that neighborhood erode, because I think it's a pretty significant neighborhood, certainly to the south, further south. Thank you.
Any other questions for David or Brett? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the audience who would care to speak in this item? Okay, if not, is there commission action or discussion?
I'll move for approval of item number 27.
I'll second the motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second for approval. Is there commission discussion?
Meredith, I hear your concern. I'll tell you what I do like about this particular one, is that they put the whole block together to bring it to us. In cases in the past, I think we've looked at a lot of blocks that have been a piece of the block brought together. And I like the idea that they put the whole block together. Certainly, I'd feel a little different if there were some neighbors here talking about it, against it. I share some of your concerns, but I speak in the merit of it. I, I like the way they put it together. And obviously, the, they must have sold it to the neighborhood, or I think we'd be hearing from some of them. I'm going to support this particular one.
I'm uncomfortable that there wasn't a neighborhood meeting, but if the signs, signs were posted, they certainly would have had the opportunity to be here.
Any other commission discussion?
I can support this motion too, because of the adjacency to the institutional areas, but I do think Meredith brings out a good point, that before we go too much further, there needs to be some discussion about what some of those boundaries might look like. We certainly have a lot of history in this area, and being more forward thinking in, in sort of helping the neighborhood define that before we get ourselves into some challenging situations would be a good effort on our part. But I, I feel like this is appropriate, and I'll be able to support it.
Other discussion?
I think that the, the point that Anita and the other ones bring up is good. We can either let this neighborhood change through development, or perhaps do some, be a little bit proactive and try to come up with a plan or a comprehensive plan that would allow some planned growth in that area. Otherwise, you're just letting these properties come in, and then they are developed as they come in, and it could get to be a real checkerboard neighborhood there if that happens. Not sure how to do that, but that would just be a suggestion.
If the piece on the north side of Eighteenth Street is all institutional, conceivably you could have two more blocks to the west and then all the way up Fifth Avenue too as transition, and that would be a huge impact on the neighborhood.
Dave, you're talking about coming down Eighteenth Street, the two blocks to the west?
Yeah, I'm just saying that that whole piece there could conceivably someday be institutional, if it's zoned institutional. You know, the transition, then, if you go to the next block over and then the next block to the west, you would have what they're attempting to do now, just along the whole way.
It's just a good time for the dialogue. Every time we think this is a 20-year issue, it ends up being a five-year issue, and there's just such explosive growth around facilities of this nature, so it would just be good to deal with it now in sort of a planned approach. But again, there's so much heavy industrial in that area that it seems like an appropriate use.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for item 27. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 27 is recommended for approval. Item 28, rezone a G Ag Culture District to the O Office, RD Residential, RS2 Residential, and RC Recreation Conservation District for future development of allowed uses. That item did not get the signs up, so that one is deferred for 30 days to our next meeting. So the next item we'll hear is item 29, a conditional use permit in the C3 Central Business District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at 109 East Ten Street. Staff report, please.
The applicant is proposing to open a Mexican restaurant that serves malt beverages and also offers billiards. Billiards would be up on the second floor, the restaurant would be on the main floor. On-sale alcohol will serve both locations. Previously, this site was occupied by a restaurant with on-sale alcohol as a conditional use. Nothing is really changing in the way of the floor plan. There will be, there's no outdoor seating indicated, no live music indicated, just the billiards on the second floor. The three criteria for, established for looking at on-sale alcohol beverage uses, one, that it does not create an undue concentration of similar uses; two, is not in an area where children could be expected to frequent patronize or recreate; and three, be compatible with the characteristics of surrounding uses and not be injurious to surrounding properties. The applicant has had a meeting with neighbors, a neighborhood meeting downtown Sioux Falls, and in your identity packet this evening, there is a letter from downtown Sioux Falls identifying the neighbors who attended the meeting and the subjects discussed. They have some recommendations there that they would like you to consider this evening. The applicant has addressed some of those already in their application. For example, the applicant indicates hours of business to be 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. for the lunch crowd and will close no later than 12:00 midnight. There will be no outdoor seating and no live music, as proposed by the applicant. The applicant had their neighborhood meeting on March 24th, and that report is in your packet. The applicant has provided a security management plan that has been reviewed and approved by the police department. Staff finds that the application meets the requirements of the submittal, is not an undue concentration, is not in an area where children could be expected to frequent patronize or recreate, although it is within 600 feet of several parks. Children who would be in those parks in a downtown area would be expected to be supervised. And finally, it is compatible with the characteristics of surrounding uses, as there are a number of restaurants with on-sale alcohol and several alcoholic establishments on their own in this district. Because the applicant has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, and there is a plan check that would be required by zoning and building services, staff is recommending approval with two stipulations. One, that it be approved for this applicant only, and two, that the security management plan approved by the crime prevention officer is provided prior to business opening. I believe I expressed the neighborhood comments, and it's in your packet, perhaps they're this evening to comment directly. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve, I'm a little confused. We talk about a restaurant, and in the letter I see things like not allowing children under the age of 21 before 10 o'clock. Yet, this conditional use permit is for an on-sale alcohol establishment, which means that there would never be children allowed in this operation. So can you clarify for us, is this a restaurant?
Okay.
Or bar?
I would like the applicant to clarify that. The original application was for an on-sale alcohol establishment. In the course of reviewing that and discussing with neighbors the nature of the business, the applicant did change their request or the description of their request to a Mexican restaurant. So that, if that is a condition for approval, it would have to be made this evening, that it be an accessory use to a restaurant.
An accessory use, okay.
Steve, we could carry on and vote on the item as it exists, but correct it in the, as a stipulation?
That's correct.
Steve?
I think the applicant should address that.
If that's the case, yeah.
Was the applicant given a copy of the letter from downtown Sioux Falls people?
I didn't notice whether they were copied or not. I didn't give them one, though.
If he doesn't have one, maybe you can make him a copy and slip it through.
Any other questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question regarding the issue of live music. I can recall that there was some other applications for this type of business in that area, and the neighboring adjoining businesses were concerned about live music. You did make some mention of that in your comments.
The applicant indicated in their request that there would not be live music. I mean, that was indicated to the neighbors as a report of the neighborhood meeting, that they indicated to the neighbors there would not be live music.
So that was just communicated to neighbors regarding live music. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening, my name is Saul Orozco. I live in Ohio, Ohio, North Carolina. He's my translator. Henry Pacardo.
My name is Saul Pacardo, 1400 South Marion Road.
Do you have anything to add to the staff report?
No.
Any questions?
Could you please clarify for us our discussion as to whether your, your application, the way that we read it tonight, shows that you want to be an on-sale alcohol establishment, and that's very different than a, a restaurant serving alcohol? Can you clarify for us which?
He says he would like to have a, to have a beer license, you know, to help, to pay the rent and everything, but his thing is to do a restaurant.
Okay, so then, we, we really need to change the wording of the conditional use permit? Is that something, staff, that we can just do as a, as a note, as an accessory use? As a stipulation for approval?
I have an additional question. In the letter that was submitted, in the third paragraph, it says, "At my new location, I will open at 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. for the lunch crowd." Was that to be 10:00 to 1?
He says he would like to open at 10:00 and close at 12:00 a.m., so be open from 10:00 a.m. to midnight.
Okay, okay. Then we can make that change.
Other questions?
Are you comfortable if we add a stipulation to your operation that does not allow for live music in that location?
Anything else, other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak in this item?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, good evening. I'm Daniel Stadamo with downtown Sioux Falls, here tonight representing several of the business and property owners in the area of this applicant's proposed business. My greatest concern is not that we have a new restaurant. In fact, I encourage that. I hope Mr. Orozco has a lot of success with this new restaurant. My greatest concern is making sure it is a restaurant and not a bar. That's the, the template of the letter. It's my fault that the applicant did not receive a copy of the letter. The letter basically just reiterates the points he made in his letter. It's been my experience that unless you actually add these things as conditions to the conditional use permit, it's going to be very hard to come back later and address some of those concerns. Live music, in retrospect, I wish I would have said amplified live music versus live music. I think live music would be appropriate, as long as it's at a certain decibel point. That's why I say perhaps you might consider amplified live music. I think changing it to the, making sure it's an accessory use, it's also my understanding that it's very difficult for you to find out later if it actually is an accessory use, which is why I ask that you add a number of these stipulations now, even if it is accessory use, to make sure that the establishment is actually a restaurant versus a bar.
Any questions for Dan?
Dan, I just want to, I'm going to kind of move through these and, and have you agree or disagree that we're kind of covering the points of your letter. You see the, the two stipulations that the city has put on. If we added a third that would state no amplified loud music, a fourth that would clarify hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to midnight, a fifth that this would be an accessory use to a restaurant, and a sixth that no one under 21 would be allowed after the hours of 10 o'clock. In your mind, would that cover the content of your letter?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak in this item?
I guess not. Anita, could you tell those again? I got no amplified music is number three.
No amplified live music, four would be hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to midnight, five...
7:00 a.m.?
7:00 a.m., which, yes, would allow breakfast serving.
Mr. Chair, is this part of an, an emotion?
No, discussion at this point. I just want to write down what she said, so.
Shauna.
That's good, because I missed one.
Could I ask Shauna a quick question?
Sure.
What, what does make the differential between an accessory use to a restaurant versus...
Accessory use is something that is incidental to a primary use. So it, an accessory building, for example, would be a shed or a garage at your, at your single family home. It has to be incidental, smaller in nature, it's not the primary reason, the primary use. The primary use would be the restaurant. Accessory is anything that's extra, that complements the primary use.
And to prove that, what would you look at, grocery receipts or the amount of business they're doing, food versus alcohol?
It would be difficult to, to prove that, you know, if some, the way the ordinance is currently written, and we'll talk about an amendment proposed later this evening, it is difficult to nail down the difference between a restaurant and a bar when you're talking about alcohol, because we only have one, currently one definition for alcohol, and that's the on-sale alcohol establishment.
Thank you.
All right, now the issue of, Shauna, as long as you're up there, the issue of stipulating that no one under 21 can be there after 10 o'clock, is that something we can do and enforce?
If it's an accessory use, the police department has allowed those people who are not over the age of 21 and over in, in the establishment. For example, you know, if a 16-year-old wanted to go to Applebee's, although they have an alcohol license, they certainly would be allowed to because it's considered an accessory use. If it is a primary use as a bar or a, a primary use as an on-sale alcohol establishment, the crow, which is clearly not accessory, that's a primary use, that's a 21-only. So if it is an accessory use, then unless you stipulate it, those people who are under the age of 21 would be allowed in there.
So I'll just finish my list, hopefully to clarify that the petitioner will agree with those stipulations. The hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to midnight, five would be accessory use to a restaurant, six would be no one under 21 after the hours of 10:00 p.m. And I would also suggest that we do a, potentially a one-year review of the conditional use permit.
Before we get a motion, does anybody have any comments?
Was one of the stipulations regarding amplified music?
Yes. Number three, number three, no amplified.
But it's only amplified live music, is the way you said it.
If this motion goes forward with that stipulation, how, I'm just asking the, the question of how to, how do you enforce that?
I would guess if there's a complaint and something's plugged into an amplifier, then they could shut the music down. Would that be correct, Shauna?
Well, I just want to make sure that we're not leaving.
We would enforce it like any other zoning infraction. We would enforce it like any other zoning infraction. I mean, we would probably send them a letter, make them aware, notify them that it's in violation with the conditional use permit application, or conditional use standard. Then we would, um, monitor it and make sure that the violation is corrected. You know, if not, then we have the ability to issue citations and administrative tickets if they continue to violate.
And that would be a result of a complaint?
Correct.
From adjoining?
From anyone.
It could be from anyone. The complaints come from all sources. So I'll change that to just no amplified music.
Anita, was this fair to, uh, put a limit on him to ten o'clock and not do it to other restaurants, say, in Applebee's or...
Are we talking about the under twenty-one?
Mm-hmm. I mean, if this is truly a restaurant, I mean, I've never heard this talked about or brought up with any other restaurants that have alcohol as an accessory use.
I got the sense that he agreed to this in, in philosophy, because he stated in his letter, it doesn't seem to be anything that is causing, causing any harm to the applicant. It seems to be how he wants to run his business. So I see it as a safeguard for the downtown area by putting it on here. He, he, he states it in his letter, Kenny, that I will not allow anyone under twenty-one in my establishment after ten p.m. That might also help him run his restaurant differently. So he, he asked for it. That's why I'm fairly comfortable putting it in there.
Well, I guess if, if he knows what that means, then, uh, to me, it's treating this applicant, I think, a little bit different than I've seen it treat ever applicants in the past, but if he's comfortable with it, I guess he's comfortable with it.
He asked for it.
I, I think I would submit that, um, we had a situation on West Tall Street with Alavella, and that hours of operation came from neighborhood input, feeling that they wanted to, that the minimum amount of impact on the neighborhood was limiting the number of hours, so as long as the, uh, owner was cooperative on that, and I think the neighbors was, and we have a similar situation here, in that we're trying to minimize the impact to the, to any property owners, so.
If he was in huge opposition to it, Kenny, I, I mean, we, if he was in huge opposition to it, but he's asking for it, in my opinion...
I'm just wondering, the other seven restaurants this is close to, do we have that sort of situation on them? I don't think we do, and that's the only point I'm making, is a, uh, are we treating everybody the same?
And I don't think they asked us for it.
Okay.
One, one other issue, um, the hours of operation, the petitioner had asked for ten a.m. to midnight, so do we, should we go at ten a.m. versus seven a.m.?
I think seven was what downtown...
Was requesting.
Put in, and so...
Is there any need to give the extra hours that petitioner isn't asking for?
To me, that just gives him more flexibility.
If he would decide to serve breakfast or something like that, it would give him the opportunity to do that.
Okay, Anita, you ready to make a motion?
Am I ready to make a motion, everyone? Okay, I'll do that. Uh, move to approve with the existing two stipulations, and I'll go through the list. Uh, number three, no amplified music. Number four, hours of operation, seven a.m. to midnight. Number five, as an accessory use to a restaurant. Number six, that no one under twenty-one would be allowed after the hours of ten p.m. And number seven, that we would do a one-year conditional use permit review.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further commission discussion?
Well, I'm not going to support it, but I, I know where everybody's at. Uh, I think we're putting some, whether he's requested that he'll go along with this, it'll put him in that box, that we're not putting other establishments in the same deal under. And, uh, I guess if he were to go down the road and want to decide to change our stipulations, I guess he would have to come back to us, but...
He has that opportunity.
I think the other one that we were talking about, I think we were talking about revocating a license in that particular situation, where the neighborhood got involved and to keep from losing his license, I think we agreed on some time restraints. I think we put a year's review on it, and that seems to have been working very nicely. But I believe he came back and lived at that time, didn't, uh, didn't that restaurant come back and, uh...
Changed the time, but I believe still that, I don't think there's anyone under twenty-one in there after ten o'clock, Kenny.
I think there wasn't that a situation where they were closing down the kitchen and wanted to turn it into a nightclub at that point? If this is a restaurant.
And I, I appreciate your, your input, Kenny, that one of the reasons that I think the one-year review would be good, would be, it would allow him a process to come back and negotiate on some of these items, if...
I think it would also be good without some of the stipulation, but that being said, you know, we could, uh, address it if it, if there was a problem.
All right, any other discussion?
All right, all those in favor on item twenty-nine with the seven stipulations say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign?
Aye.
Item twenty-nine is approved with seven stipulations. Item thirty is a conditional use permit in C four Plant Commercial District to construct a new commercial center on a site greater than one acre in size at thirty-one hundred and thirty-one oh four East Twenty-Sixth Street. Staff report.
The Cherry Creek Grill is proposing to redevelop their property as presented to you this evening, as a conditional use permit for a project on a site greater than an acre. Basically, they're proposing to, uh, construct a new building, be a multi-tenant, uh, commercial building with, uh, expanded parking, and to remove the existing building. The Cherry Creek Grill would occupy one tenant space within the new building. The other tenant spaces, uh, tenants have not been identified. Applicants and owners are represented by David Erickson, Bandywall Associates, and Charles Knite. It's a two-point-two acre site, and currently is a restaurant and parking lot. Conditional use permit requirements for, uh, development of retailing on a site greater than an acre, retailing should be designed in a fashion that it minimizes a large amount of parking required on the site, and those uses should be encouraged to provide a safe and convenient pedestrian circulation pattern through the parking lot, and further such uses should be encouraged to develop an attractive sign package. The plan that is, uh, before you this evening has further been modified after, uh, the report was written, and I have that document, we'll put it on the overhead. Basically, it shows how, uh, they are going to meet, uh, the parking requirements, which staff pointed out are different than what they had originally proposed. The minimum required parking for a building of this size, multi-tenant, is a hundred and forty-nine spaces, and the plan previously indicated a hundred and twenty-nine. Their revised plan does show that they meet the required, uh, number of parking spaces by providing bicycle racks. The planning commission may approve additional, uh, stipulations or conditions, uh, as a plan addendum. Staff indicates that prior to permit application, they are going to have to meet the requirements, and by meeting the required parking requirements with bicycle racks, it's, it is allowed. Past projects in this district have, um, designated this natural drainage way to the north with its existing vegetation as kind of a buffer zone to the residential neighborhood, and the neighbors have been quite concerned about the preservation of that. Staff is also concerned in the, in the plan that's been submitted, uh, that they are encroaching into that, uh, natural buffer zone, and it is possible that they could do that and still preserve a natural buffer between them and the neighborhood. However, the plan does not show how that would be done. Staff encourages them to revise their plan or to provide additional information prior to getting a building permit that would satisfy that requirement, that the natural buffer be preserved as much as possible. They are indicating trans, um, relocating existing trees that were put in there to help buffer the neighborhood into that natural buffer, and thereby strengthening it or providing additional material to help it function as a buffer, and perhaps they could address that requirement this evening. The only thing staff would be concerned about is that the trees get planted on, uh, more or less level ground rather than a severe slope, so that they would survive. They're also concerned about, uh, any filling into the drainage easement, that is not allowed, and they would have to show that on their plan. They are indicating commercial signage on the lower level of the, of this two-story structure facing to the residential neighborhood. Uh, staff feels that commercial signage should not be allowed to be visible from the residential neighborhood, um, and possibly it would not be if the natural buffer is Building and parking lot lighting are not indicated, um, building lighting is not indicated. Again, stipulations to preserve the fact that building lighting and signage would not shine into the neighborhood could be applied. With this change in use, also a deceleration lane is required on Twenty-Sixth Street. They would have to address the setback from that additional easement, and that could be done in the revised plan. All in all, I think the plan can work with additional effort, uh, put into it, as long as they satisfy the requirements of zoning and building services, uh, fire access and so on, building codes. Uh, staff is willing to recommend approval with five stipulations. The five that are listed in your report, one, that the fill material is not allowed to be placed in the twelve-foot drainage and greenway easement, two, that relocated trees are be placed on level ground, three, that parking on the north side of the building is to be screened from view to the neighborhood, four, that building or wall signage is not to be visible to the residential neighborhood, and five, building accent lighting is not allowed on the north side or ends of the building. These are stipulations that have been applied to other buildings in this commercial area, and we feel that they can be, um, worked out in this project as well. We've had no calls from the neighborhood, signs were posted, and the applicant should be prepared to report any neighborhood comments at tonight's meeting. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair, Steve, did you say you have a site plan that indicates how they can get twenty more parking stalls?
Uh, staff has not reviewed the plan in detail, however, the plan indicates the required number of parking with the bicycle racks.
Bike racks count towards parking?
They do.
Steve, is that a one-to-one?
It's not a one, one-to-one, it's a four-to-one.
Okay.
Is that right, four-to-one? Four bicycle, four bicycle parking to one?
Five-to-one.
It's really difficult to see what has changed.
Perhaps we could have the applicant come forward and explain it?
I see where some more parking has been added down on the lower level, but, uh, okay.
The plan also shows how the deceleration lane would work in there.
Steve, oh, excuse me, because of the sensitivity, um, of the neighbors, which we've experienced before, um, to issues, especially lighting, I think it would behoove us and you to be able to see the photometric plan before we approve the project.
Okay, if one was not provided, no?
I see that. Did they give you any indications to when it would be provided?
No. It is required for the building permit.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else for Steve?
So could we cover that, um, as just a stipulation, saying an approved photometric plan by planning before building permit?
It's required already in the zoning ordinance, the lighting ordinance requires it, so you wouldn't have to stipulate that, no?
Bike racks are two-to-one, just in case you're wondering. Shauna just checked. One of the reasons that we changed the photometric plan to be at building permit is this is very similar to, and we're getting a little off-subject, I am, um, is similar to the landscaping, and Merritt probably understands this as well as anybody, is if you ask them right now to do their photometric plan, they'll come in and give you a photometric plan, they'll put their lights on this plan, but then they'll come out and they'll grade the site, and they'll set the final grade, and their photometric plan won't be anything like what we just approved. So what we've said and decided is, photometric plan has to be determined at building permit. What you're going to build is what you're going to build. Don't come in and just show us your lights and then grade the site, because otherwise the photometric plan doesn't work until you figure out the final grades. So that's why we've basically made the determination. Set the grades first and then tell us where your lights are going to be.
Okay, just so I can sleep tonight, can you explain the bike thing to me?
The bike thing, absolutely. Um, probably back in the nineteen seventies when we created the zoning ordinance, it says that you can buy a transit pass for buses, and that you could have, at that point, um, reduced parking for that, as well as if you put a bike rack in, you could reduce the amount of parking that you need on your site. So you can buy transit passes, either monthly or individual passes for your employees, or you could do bike racks. You can't reduce completely, but you can do percentages.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So there's a limit on it?
Yes.
I, am I missing, I mean, I guess I'm not seeing where the change is.
Maybe we'll ask the applicant to come up and they could point it out. Is applicant here, please?
Raquel Blount, Lloyd Companies, thirty-one thirty West Fifty-seventh Street, here on behalf of Charlie Knite and Dave Erickson. Um, the plan was modified to accommodate additional parking with the deceleration and the addition of the bike racks and some building adjustments on the south side of the building. We can analyze that, you know, further in detail out where those, the number of parking stalls, I don't have that with me. The landscaping issue, we are wanting to work with the neighborhood and the drainage and the natural landscaped areas and enhance that, and the design of the building would incorporate, you know, soft lighting in appropriate areas and not shining the lighting toward residential neighborhoods, and the discussions have been to add natural greenage to planters in front of the building, in the islands, and around the building to kind of tie in with that greenway area. Uh, we understand the stipulation that fill cannot go in the back area, and, um, the signage issue on the back is more of, um, not retail signage, as will be shown on the front side of the building, but more service-oriented and identifying the tenant space with, you know, window decal or, you know, something very professionally done, but not to a retail level, as you'll see on, on the front side. Any further questions?
Any questions for Raquel?
I have, uh, two. Did you have a neighborhood meeting?
No, we did not.
I think that's a problem because of the past history with that area there. And how about, uh, the building materials, is it going to be four sides similar, or will the backside, north side be different from the east, south, and west?
The plan is to incorporate some of the brick and stone and some of those accents to the backside of the building with columns, um, and, you know, again, not, not having it have the same retail presence as the front from a signage or, you know, presentation, but from building materials, yes, that it would be incorporated around four sides of the building.
What have you done to address the drainage and the greenway in that area?
We are, studies have been done on the, um, topography and the elevation, and, and we are furthering some of those discussions. We had some additional test ordered. Uh, we are also researching the option of potentially acquiring some more ground so that that parking can be eased up on the main site, and so that is being explored at this time, a way that we can add additional parking and ease up on some of the area toward the drainage.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair, could I ask one more question to Steve? Steve, will this be our final chance to look at this?
Yes.
So, okay. Thank you.
Is there commission discussion before we have a motion?
Well, I guess I'm not quite sure how the rest of you feel, but I just feel like there's so many moving parts and answers that we don't have.
Mr. Chair, shouldn't we have a motion before we do the discussion?
We can do that too? If there's a motion?
I would be willing to make the, for the sake of discussion, the motion to recommend approval with the five stipulations.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for the approval with five stipulations. Is there commission discussion?
I guess I have a concern about the drainage and greenway questions, that if there, if that hasn't been addressed completely, that we may want to put some stipulations on, so maybe we should look at that later, since that's an issue in that area.
I think that is addressed, though, in the first stipulation, that it's not allowed in the greenway.
That's addressing one piece of it, but I don't know if that's, I guess staff would have to say whether that's sufficient or not. I thought maybe there might be some additional stipulations to put out there.
I'm just very uncomfortable moving forward with this at all, given the history of this neighborhood without a neighborhood meeting. I really am.
I am too. I went by the site on two occasions, and there were not signs up. I guess that the applicant has said that signs were up, so I'm just, I'm not sure that the people to the north would have known that something is going on.
Because I'm very surprised that there aren't some neighbors here tonight knowing what we've gone through before with this neighborhood. So I really cannot support this until there's a neighborhood meeting and we have some report from that.
Other discussion? Okay.
Maybe just one more piece. I understand the concerns, and we do have some past experience with the neighborhood. When I look at the development and some of the things addressed in the stipulation, I think it might be seen as an improvement to that neighborhood. I'm not sure if there were posting of signs, and certainly that would be an issue if this ends up being a surprise to some people. But I'm fairly comfortable with what I see here to move forward on this item.
Anita, just making that drainway back there, I think it appears to me there's a 12-foot easement there. I think the existing greenway back there is more than 12 feet. I think this parking lot is going to encroach on that to some degree. I wonder if making that greenway smaller could be a potential problem for the neighborhood. I don't know.
There's also, yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that it's going to reduce that greenway. There's also been a lot of concerns back there for trash, and so what they're doing in terms of, you know, the trees and the screening, might, I think, might be a better
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, you said you've been by this site twice and have not seen signs?
I drove by there twice, and one was yesterday at about 1:00. The first time by was over the weekend. I don't remember what time it was, but I did not see signs on either occasion in the front on 26th Street.
Well, that could be an issue. Certainly it was, seemed like the minute the snow starts to melt, the wind increases, so I don't know if that should be a concern or not, or...
Yeah, we didn't ask, I'm not sure if staff, at this point, can tell us if they understand if that was done or not.
You know, with the moving parts, I wonder if...
What we understood was the signs were posted, but we don't know if they stayed up the whole time, which happens when we have snow. So I think it's a valid discussion that, did everybody see them? We never know. Signs were up at some point, they did get posted, so...
Mr. Chair, I appreciate some of the comments that have been made, and, but at the same time, I know that there will be a complete set of documents, design documents, put together for this. And they'll be submitted to the city for a plan check. And I know, having gone through that several times myself, that that's a, they will not get a permit if they're in violation of any of the zoning issues, the stipulations that we require of the project, or any of the building code issues, for that matter. I also tend to think that this could, with a little bit more time, design time and detailing, be an improvement, considering what's there now, so...
Okay, Dave?
Well, I just have a question regarding procedure. If this motion moves ahead, and I'm not sure what direction it would go, if it was, if it failed to pass, is that the same as a denial then?
I think that's set it back six months, if I'm not mistaken.
If that sets it back six months, then perhaps we should ask the petitioner if they're interested in a deferral, if this looks like it's not going to pass. I just hate to see, you know, because of the issues that Pam had, which I think is justifiable and kiddy, that this would be fail, and that puts it back six months, and with the time of the year, this could be an issue for the developer, so...
Shawna, question?
Just need clarification on that, please.
If this goes forward and it does not pass, then a substitute motion?
If you, if the motion fails, you have not approved it. There is no, you have not approved that conditional use permit, so in essence, it has been denied.
It's the same as if it's not?
Correct.
Can we make a motion to defer?
Someone can change the motion. Yeah. Before the first one... After? Well, no, because you've already not approved it. But because we haven't approved it, doesn't mean we have denied it. Yes. You, I'm just looking for the six-month thing here. Go ahead.
The motion's for approval. If the motion does not pass, the motion fails.
Right.
That's the question. The motion's for approval, if it doesn't pass, then the motion fails. You can have a substitute motion at that point.
Right. And for clarity, for clarity, that would not come back for six months.
No, no, you can...
You have a substitute motion on the table. The motion is on the table.
Yeah.
Right now. So you make a motion to approve, which is on the table. If that fails, then you have a substitute motion today to do something else.
Someone could make a motion to defer it for 30 days at that time.
Another motion, yeah. And it's not six months. We took that out when we did some amendments to the conditional use process. They are free to reapply.
We're going to call for the question here on item 30. This is for approval of a conditional use permit with five stipulations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
Aye.
Item 30 is approved with five stipulations. Item 31 is a conditional use permit in the O Office District to allow construction of a boarding house at West 17th Street and South Lake Avenue. Staff report, please.
Planning Commission considered rezoning to allow this project to go forward to a conditional use hearing. And the rezoning was approved, and it will be considered by the City Council here next Monday night. If that is approved, then the conditional use permit can proceed. The effective date of the conditional use will be the effective date of the rezoning. The applicant is proposing to construct Ronald McDonald House, and the plans and site plan and so on are included in your information packet. Detail the project as presented. It is basically the same presentation that was made for the rezoning. Staff notes that a front yard setback of 25 feet is required on Southwest Avenue, and also that parking lot screening is required in order to get their conditional, their building permit. A landscaping schedule is not provided, and required landscaping, one tree for every 50 foot of street frontage, is required in the front yard, or one tree for every six parking spaces, provided whichever is greater. The applicant will have to revise their plan to meet those requirements for a building permit. Staff is recommending approval, subject to providing parking lot screening. That concludes staff report. We've had no calls.
Questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Ron Nelson, 122 South Phillips, representing the Ronald McDonald House. I think the only thing I'd have to add would be pertaining to the screening and the parking lot screening. And I think the plan shows combination of berm and shrubbery or some type of green plant material. And we're talking with the neighbors to determine if they prefer a fence, and so we'll kind of go either way. It just hasn't been determined yet. Open to any other of your questions.
Any questions for Ron?
Ron, are you visiting with the one particular neighbor that property had...
That was here at the last planning commission meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions for Ron?
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? Okay, if not, is there a motion for item 31?
I'll move to approve with the one stipulation.
I'll second.
There's a motion to second any commission discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Item 31 is approved with the one stipulation. Item 32 is a conditional use permit in the C4 Plan Commercial District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at West 41st Street and Ellis Road. Staff report.
Planning Commission also had this item in front of them last month to approve development of a site greater than an acre for commercial use. The plan is basically the same as before, except now the applicant would like to locate on-sale alcohol establishment as a tenant in this multi-tenant commercial facility. The facility plan, site plan, appears to conform to the requirements of the zoning district, and it is not in an area where there would be an undue concentration of uses, or a place where children could be expected to frequent unsupervised or recreate, and would not have an undue impact on adjacent property values, as it is in an area that is relatively undeveloped, as of yet. Residential uses, low density, are some distance away. There would be some apartments in the future to the east. To the west, there is a, what is it, the YWCA? YWCA? Property would be outside of the 600-foot radius of influence. So, all in all, I believe that unless you have some questions of the applicant concerning neighborhood comments, staff is willing to make a recommendation for approval with two stipulations. One, it be approved for this applicant only, and two, that a security management plan approved by the crime prevention officer prior to business operation be provided. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Rick McKinney, 7209 Rough Riders Circle, Sioux Falls.
Anything to add?
No.
Any questions for Rick? Okay, thank you. Anyone care to address this item? If not, is there commission action?
I move to approve with the two stipulations.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor with the two stipulations say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Item 32 is approved with two stipulations. Item 33, Final Development Plan in Subarea B, Lundstrom Plan Development District for construction of a mixed-use development, C store with fuel station, retail, office, and services at West 69th Street and West Ralph Rogers Road. Staff report.
And yet another one that the Planning Commission did hear at the last meeting, which was approval of a major amendment to allow the use in this subarea of the Plan Development District. It did go forward to the City Council and was approved. The effective date of that major amendment will also be the effective date of this final development plan, if approved this evening. The applicant is proposing to construct a multi-tenant commercial building with 12,900 square foot of space for unidentified tenants, although one of the tenants is gas dispensing, C store with gas dispensing. The plan indicates the dispensing islands. But it would also have retail, office, and other services as tenants. Eight gas dispensing pump islands to serve 16 cars at one time are identified. Points of access are identified to the south and to the east. The subarea regulations Lundstrom's PD apply, and those are listed in your report. Basically, the density area and yard and height regulations follow the O Office District for any development along West Ralph Rogers Road. The applicant site plan does indicate conformance to those requirements. Other regulations in Subarea B include, any freestanding signs along Ralph Rogers shall be monument style. All parking and loading spaces shall be screened from Ralph Rogers Road. Street trees shall be planted at 40-foot interval spacing along 69th, Louise, and Ralph Rogers Road, and coincide with completion of subarea development. And all development shall be in conformance with the Interstate 229 Designer of your District standards. That last one obviously doesn't apply to this particular parcel because of the distance Staff would like the plan to be improved with the pedestrian pathway from the public sidewalk to the storefront. Public sidewalk being provided to the east and to the south. Staff indicates that they should provide shared access improvements as indicated at the southwest corner of the property, as plotted and as shown. If that is what is being proposed, it should be included in the construction documents. And then, shared access improvements at the northeast corner of the property should be provided as plotted. If access is provided to Ralph Rogers Road as shown, then we'll have to get that access point approved by city engineering. Otherwise, the shared access is required at the northeast corner of the property. Side yard setback is indicated as five feet, and a side yard setback of 10 feet is required. Plan would have to be revised to show that. Parking is required for 65 cars, and they are showing 68 parking spaces available. Based on subarea regulations, nine street trees are required along Ralph Rogers Road, and seven street trees are required along 69th, and those would also have to be indicated on the plan. Parking is required to be screened from Ralph Rogers Road. That would have to be indicated. Signage is indicated by location on the plan, but the heights, area, and design are not indicated. They would have to conform to C4 regulations and subarea regulations, especially along Ralph Rogers Road. They show a one-story commercial building with exterior insulation finish systems and a brick veneer, split-faced concrete masonry units, and accent panels. Colors are not indicated, it's a flat roof. Based on neighborhood input at the major amendment hearing, staff, or the applicant should be willing to share with you neighborhood comments at tonight's meeting. We've received no calls, at least I haven't. And that concludes staff report. We are concluding with a recommendation for approval with three stipulations. One, freestanding signs along Ralph Rogers Road be monument style. Two, all parking and loading be screened from Ralph Rogers Road. And three, if a deceleration lane is provided along West 69th, required street trees shall be placed elsewhere on the subject property. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve, maybe I missed it here. Have they said anything about their hours of operation? What is the planning department's policy on...
Staff does not know the identity of the tenant.
All right, so if we were to put a, if it was a C store, gas station, if we wanted to put some hours on it, this would be the time to do it?
Now would be the time.
Which typical in this type of neighborhood that's... What's typical in this type of neighborhood that's not pure commercial, blending into office, single-family? Do you close those at midnight, eleven o'clock, ten o'clock?
I know in the past where we've dealt with those situations, the neighborhood has made the call on that.
Thinking back, for the first time this was proposed, if I'm not mistaken, there was a neighbor that came. I don't know if he's here tonight or not. Like, I know that was a concern of his. I think, light, lights, and hour of operation. I think that's the only thing I can remember hearing from the neighborhood. I think we assured him that night that we would revisit that again at this particular time.
I can't quote previous recommendations of staff on similar situations, but to my mind, it seems like eleven o'clock at night was the one that we used in the past. Is that right, Russ? But again, lacking neighborhood input, then it would be something you would want to ask the applicant.
Thank you.
Steve, if the tenant is unidentified, the stipulations, and if you put hours of operation, that is on the building then, I guess?
It's on the, it's on the final development plan of this facility. That's correct. Whoever the tenant is would have to abide by those stipulations.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Steve. So Steve, we're approving this final development plan, but we're not approving the access. Is that correct?
Access is approved by city engineering. We can't approve something that's in violation of the city requirements for engineering design.
So you're saying the access is already approved by engineering?
No, it hasn't been approved by engineering. That's why I raised the question. They show access at a point different than what the plotted access is. If that is to be approved, it has to be approved by city engineering. If access is an issue in the neighborhood, then that's, that could be dealt with tonight. Our recommendation, you could put a stipulation on there for access, but lacking a stipulation for access, engineering decides where the access points are, based on city design requirements.
But if the access points change, then the layout of this site plan probably would change.
Good question for the applicant, yes. We always encourage the applicants to try to get their access points approved before they come to the public hearing. In this case, I'm not aware of any approval.
Mr. Chair, Steve, I don't think that, based on some of those Irap conversations that I've been hearing regarding access, I don't think that we could necessarily stipulate something that's contrary to what the engineers would allow for access.
That's correct. So, whichever, let's see, how do they state that? The most restrictive
Yes.
requirement holds true. And so, the most restrictive would be the engineering design consideration.
And in terms of the site layout, if you kind of, if you consider the setback requirements based on the zoning, there's only a certain buildable amount of land, and I don't think that would be affected by the access.
You know, Meredith, if the access has to come in from way on the north side? Okay.
As long as it's coming off Ralph Rogers Road. I think then you're just shifting your curb cut for parking and just flipping.
As long as you can get two, as long as you can get two access points.
Would it be correct to tell the petitioner then, if this were to be approved, the access could change, and we just need to make him aware of that?
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Raquel Blount, Lloyd Companies, thirty-one thirty West Fifty-seventh Street. We plan to work with engineering on the site design and access points. And actually, I have an alternate plan showing access points on both the northeast corner and the southwest corner. And the plan is workable either way. The tenant mix is unknown at this point. We have an alternate plan showing a retail building with a bank as an end cap with the access points that I just addressed. So, as far as the stipulation on hours for sea store use, we would be absolutely fine with that. That's, you know, really something that, should that use come to play, that that would be something that we could certainly work with.
Raquel, can we take a look at that plan?
Absolutely. The building is a twelve thousand five hundred square foot retail center. You can see the south end cap currently shows a twenty-five hundred square foot bank facility with a drive-through, maintaining the parking ratio of a one to two hundred square feet. And again, the access points are a shared access with the Lithia off Sixty-ninth Street, and the access on the northeast for Ralph Rogers Road. And again, whichever, you know, engineering determines is best suitable for this area and for the neighborhood, that's the recommendation we'll go with.
Questions for Raquel?
Raquel, did I hear you say that if this was used as a convenience store or gas dispensing, you wouldn't have a problem having a set hour on that, eleven o'clock?
No, no.
So we can make that stipulation if that were to happen?
That would be fine. We worked with the neighborhood, for the most part, very good comments. The, as you mentioned, the lighting, you know, was a concern, not necessarily of this site, but geared toward the area as a whole with the Lithia. And so, you know, we would work with that. Again, monument signage, sensitive to the neighborhood needs for design and landscaping.
So you did have a neighborhood meeting?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Since the last meeting?
No, that was with the rezoning. And we had conversations after that, and basically talked about the alternate plan, and really did not have any questions or objections.
So the neighborhood meeting you're talking about took place after the last meeting?
No, that was with the rezoning.
Okay.
Other questions?
Raquel, for the sake of conversation, if there was a stipulation added relative to hours of operation, would like the six AM to midnight be workable?
I, absolutely. You know, I think working with, again, what has been done in areas that have the residential. And really, the goal is, is to provide a service to the neighborhood. So we certainly want to have support of the neighborhood for the benefit of the business. So if the neighborhood didn't want that type of business, that wouldn't be beneficial to anybody.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there a, is there commission action on item thirty-three?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve item thirty-three with the three stipulations as stated, and then adding a fourth stipulation, hours of operation between six AM and midnight.
Are you talking about the whole, the whole unit, or just the sea store? Potential sea store?
I think it, I think it has to be done on that piece of land. We're not sure what the tenant mix is going to be in there. That should certainly give most tenant mixes hours of operation that would be doable. If they do find it later that they need more hours, it could always come back.
Okay. Is there a second?
What was that stipulation again now? What times?
Hours of operation between six AM and midnight.
I'd like to change that from midnight to eleven o'clock.
I think it's, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
I'd like to set the limit from six in the morning to eleven at night. Basically, because this is right across the streets of multifamilies. This is right next to a single-family residential. It might or might not become a sea store with gas dispensing. If it is, I think eleven o'clock works.
Shawna, help me out here. We have a motion, and the stipulation is six AM to midnight.
If he wants to make a amendment or a motion to amend the main motion, if someone seconds that...
We have to vote on that?
And the amendment, then you're back to the main motion as amended.
Okay, alright.
I'd like to make an amendment to the main motion to change the time from six AM to eleven PM.
And that's on stipulation number four?
On stipulation number four.
Leaving the other three the same?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, there is a amended, a motion to amend the main motion, and a second. All those in favor of the amendment, which would change it from six AM to eleven, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Let's do a show of hands here. All those in favor, raise your hand, please.
Favor of what now?
Favor of your motion. Okay, four, so it'd be four to three. Thank you. Opposed is three. The main motion has been amended, so now we'll vote on the main motion. And that is approval of the final development plan with four stipulations. And the four stipulation being hours of operation from six AM to eleven PM. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item thirty-three is approved with four stipulations. Item thirty-four is a final development plan in Sub Area A, Lundstrom Plan Development District to construct an eight-plex at West Ralph Rogers Road and West Miles Place. Staff report.
Thank you. My name is Shawna Goldammer, and I'm representing planning staff as the zoning enforcement manager here this evening. You may recall this final development plan, or at least the site, it was before you in January of two thousand eight. However, at that time, it's going to be for two four-plexes. The applicant has changed the plan to construct one eight-plex. The eight-plex plan is before you. The required lot size is provided. The frontages are, include a private street, which is Miles Street. And the site plan does indicate the required yards as provided. Additionally, zoning regulations require street trees. The applicant has provided a site plan depicting all the required landscaping, with the exception of some screening for that parking lot, just on the very south edge of the parking lot. And that is a condition of approval. The application does contain the sixteen points required for a final development plan, with the exception of some, with the exception of the outdoor lighting. And again, we've discussed reasons why applicants may choose not to provide lighting with the final development plan. But it would certainly be required with the building permit. Also, the final development plan criteria includes that multifamily dwellings have open spaces for recreation, and that is not indicated on the plan. The application does meet the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And the applicant, application does, our staff does recommend approval with two conditions. First, that the surface parking lot is screened along the southwest edge with a hedge. And two, that trash enclosures are constructed to accommodate recycling and trash facilities. Make them a little bit bigger to hold two dumpsters. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Shawna? Is this your last meeting?
Well, unless you have zoning ordinance amendments, then I may show up, but yeah.
Okay.
Kind of taking care of the leftovers. Thank you.
Is the applicant here, please?
Dennis Greb, sixty-four oh-eight West Statue Drive, owner. All I say is we'll address the size of the enclosure, and the screening is not a problem. We can handle that with some landscaping. Other than that, if you have any more questions, I'm the last one.
Are there any questions?
Dennis, I wanted to thank you and Todd for going back and kind of reworking that plan.
Thank you very much.
That eight-plex looks very nice. I hope that'll be a...
Lot cleaner this way.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item thirty-four?
I'll move for approval of item thirty-four. I second.
Did you say with the stipulations?
I'm sorry, with two stipulations.
And then a second?
Yep.
There's a motion to second. Is there any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor of the final development plan with two stipulations, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Item thirty-four is approved. Item thirty-five is the final development plan in Sub Area E, Granite Valley Plan Development District to construct a warehouse and office at East Dyke Drive. Staff report.
Good evening. Wes Sorensen with the City Planning Office. This is a final development plan in Sub Area E of Granite Valley Plan Development District to construct a warehouse and office. The applicants are Randy, owners are Randy DeWitt and Bonnie Mogan. The applicant is proposing this final development plan for construction of a warehouse and office for AOK Sanitary on a parcel that's slightly less than an acre in size. To the north, we have single-family residences. And to the south, we have Dyke Drive with unimproved industrial lots beyond. And also to the east, we have unimproved industrial lots. To the west, we have a Arctic Glacier Ice Warehouse and Office, which you reviewed and approved earlier this year. The applicant is, application for, and the site plan are complete. We have a building location that is generally located in the west-central portion of the site, and measures sixty feet by a hundred and twenty feet in size, or seventy-two hundred square feet. The applicant has indicated a six-foot fence in the rear landscaped area. The applicant should be prepared to address provisions for enhanced landscaping and buffering for the residential uses to the north, as well as dust mitigation for the gravel parking area and loading area for large vehicles and outdoor storage dumpsters at the period. A wall sign is proposed on the south building elevation near the building entrance. The building for the warehouse would be constructed of vertical metal panels with brick veneer bands accenting the building office entrance areas. It would also meet the height regulations. Staff is recommending approval of this final development plan, subject to six stipulations as indicated on page eighty-nine, that the required fifteen-foot rear yard landscape area be provided, and include a minimum of six-foot-high continuous wood fence with the good side of the fence to the residences to the north, and the planting of six evergreen trees spaced no more than thirty feet apart. This would help buffer the residences to the north. The tree sizes would meet the minimum requirements of the ordinance, the five-foot minimum height to be planted. The tree species selected and implanted in the front yard setback be something other than ash trees. They indicated ash trees. With our ash or disease that we have, infestations, we like to get away from our ash trees and have diversity there with our plant materials. Driveway connections to the public street be paved, and they need to file an aviation easement in accordance with their zoning ordinance as well. And that there be no stacking of dumpsters higher than the six-foot screen fence for any proposed outdoor dumpster storage. Staff has received no calls or any correspondence from the public regarding this request. We've noted that these stipulations are very similar to what you approved for the Glacier Arctic Ice proposal earlier this year. That concludes staff's report.
Any questions for Russ?
Russ?
Yes.
Good to see you.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
What is an aviation easement, Russ?
Aviation easement, we have in our zoning ordinance an overlay for the airport environments. And those properties that are within that area, they need to be aware that there's airplanes coming and going with the approach zones with the airport, and that they would not object to the low-flying and the noise that we were finding in our community. And so, that's a stipulation of that ordinance. And this falls within that particular airport environment.
I know, I'm the new kid on the block. I think it's the first time I've seen this. How large is this overlay area?
It's fairly extensive, but it's an engineered various overlay districts. It's fairly extensive, but it's, it's an engineered, various overlay districts and conical zones as the planes come in and land and so forth. We can certainly provide the planning commissioner with a map in future.
I'd like to come back sometime and just see what all that...
It's an extensive area, particularly on the north end of town.
So it's not a height restriction, it's just a...
It doesn't affect the building heights for this particular location.
Other questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
My name is Randy DeWitt. I live at 478502159 Street.
Anything to add to the staff report?
Not really.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission? Okay, I believe so. Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? All right, if not, is there commission action on item 35?
I'll move for approval with the stipulations as stated.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 35 is approved with five stipulations. Item 36 is the final development plan in Subarea W, Platinum Valley Plan Development District to construct a four-plex apartment building at West 93rd Street and South Louise Avenue. Staff report.
Russ Sorensen of the City Planning Office, again. This is a, an application for a final development plan in the Platinum Valley Plan Development Zoning District for a four-plex apartment building on a partial, slightly less than three tenths of an acre. The applicants are Brady Hyde and Bonnie Mogan, and the area is generally being developed with single-family attached twin homes, as well as some four-plex units in the area. The site is improved as a residential lot. The building would be located central to the two lots, and the final development plan is determined to be complete. The four-plex building, exterior materials would be that of brick accents with horizontal siding. It would have a 612 pitched roof with asphalt shingles. The floor plans depict four two-bedroom units, ranging in size from 688 square feet to 705 square feet. The applicant may want to address if there's been any neighborhood comments that have been received on this. Staff is not aware of any and has not received any neighborhood comments. This development is in keeping with the RD Residential District and the Subarea requirements for the Platinum Valley PD. As a result, staff is recommending approval of this request, subject to two stipulations, that all the yard areas are sodded, including the areas between the two driveways, and that the tree species be planted as something other than ash trees. That concludes staff's report. Any further questions?
Any questions for Russ?
So Russ, this four-plex is going to sit right surrounded all the way around by a single family?
No, there are others. Four-plexes just to, to the west of this.
Okay.
And you approved those final development plans earlier in the year, and then again late in the fall and winter of 2007.
Other questions? Thank you. The applicant, please.
Brady Hyde, 6716 West 60th Street.
Anything to add?
No, not really. We had planned on doing the sod and covering the entire yard anyway, and that shouldn't be a problem, the two trees, whatever you guys would like us to plant, that's fine by us, so...
All right, any questions for Brady? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
I'll move for approval of item 36 with two stipulations.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 36 is approved with the two stipulations. Item 37 is the final development plan in Subarea C, Whispering Ridge Plan Development District to construct multifamily housing at South, Southeastern Avenue and East Whispering Trail, and item 37 has been deferred. Item 38, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota amending the revised ordinance of the city by defining a full-service restaurant and revising conditional use standards of on-sale alcohol establishments. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This ordinance establishes a new land use, and that would be the full-service restaurant. Now, you may realize that to get alcohol, which would be beer, wine, or higher spirits in the zoning world, we don't dis, you know, distinguish between the different types. It's a two-step process. One, you have to get your conditional use permit first, and then the second step is that the license is actually issued to that location by the city council. This ordinance creates a new land use, that's the full-service restaurant. This will help define and separate restaurants from on-sale alcohol establishments. The new definition, a full-service restaurant, is included in section three of the ordinance that you received. To be considered a full-service restaurant, areas for kitchen, separate dining, and bar or lounge are required on plans. Full-service restaurants are allowed in the same zoning districts as on-sale alcohol establishments, but will only require a conditional use permit if they're 100 feet from residential uses. When a conditional use permit is required, a conditional use plan should have four criteria, and that would be that a menu is included, the hours of operation, a security management plan, and a floor plan depicting dining area. Additionally, the video lottery component at the request of the city council is being moved from what's currently in the licensing section of the ordinance into the land use as far as a location criteria. So there is also language in there that would be included in the conditional use standards, that video lottery placement would not be allowed within 2,000 feet of any city park, video lottery machine, or elementary school. And that would be measured from property line to property line, similar to the language that is in a different part of the code. We'd like to move that back into the ordinance for zoning. And that concludes staff report. Again, the, the major focus of this is to create a new land use, and that is of the full-service restaurant.
Questions for Shawna?
You mentioned Applebee's earlier, Shawna. This would fit that bill.
Absolutely, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Must be getting late.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 38? If not, is there a, is there commission action? Item 38.
I'll move for approval of item 38.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. Is there any further commission discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 38 is recommended for approval. Item 39 is adjourned.
So move.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.